Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and start the city council meeting for April 20th, 2009 to order. First thing on the agenda as always is roll call and determination of the quorum. Amber, if you would, please.
Quaker?
Here.
Olson? Kroger? Costello? Hadcock?
Here.
LaCroy?
Here.
Martinson? Wyffenbach?
Here.
Ocrecki?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, everyone. Just a reminder, if you have a cellphone or a pager, if you would turn that to the silent or self-destruct mode, we'd appreciate it. And just a reminder, if it does go off, the rule is that you do need to buy donuts for everyone in the room. And just so you know, we do enforce that because I bought donuts last week.[53.14][53.14](Laughter) So, if you would, please. The other thing is, if you wish to speak to any item on the agenda, we do have speaker request forms. They're to your left, my right, over at the media table. If you could fill that out, put your name. Also, the agenda item number that you're interested in speaking on. And turn those over to Amber at the end here. Amber, could you just, there you go. Thank you. And that way, as we make our way through the agenda, we'll make sure that we call on you. Next thing on the agenda is the invocation. And we have David Kenyon from Fountain Springs Community Church will be giving our invocation. So if you please rise and then remain standing, we'll have Troop 131 go and start us with our Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we stop in this moment before all begins, and we submit to you and ask that you just be a part of this meeting, Lord, as all the details are discussed. May we discuss them in a way that just exemplifies that we know who you are and that you're here. Lord, may everything that happens in this city be driven by you and honoring to you. And so, Lord, as we continue through this, we give it over to you, this meeting, and we ask that you be a part of our lives and a part of everything that we do. We love you, Lord, with all of our hearts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Deb, Troop 131, come up here, if you would, just up front.
(Inaudible)
That was Troop 131. Next thing on the agenda as always is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additional items to be added to tonight's agenda? If so, please turn on your light. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add an item under all the person items called the 24/7 program.
Okay, let's see. Let's call that 91A. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like, under Alderman items, I'd like to add a report on the What Now workshop and, uh, item C, the report from the historical and boarding school trauma workshop.
Okay, very good. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Just a journalist, thank you, if I could.
Okay, so we have a 91A, 91B, C, and D. Any additional items to be added to tonight's agenda? Anyone else? If not, the chair would look for motion to adopt the agenda as amended. We have a motion and a second, and discussion on that motion. And discussion. Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We also need to approve the minutes of the April 6, 2009 city council meeting. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and discussion on that motion. And discussion. Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. That does take us to awards and recognitions. At this time, I'd like to invite Box Elder Mayor Al Dial and also our Officer Jason Everson to come up.
Well, tonight, we have a special presentation because of a truly heroic effort by one of our brand-new patrol officers. And Mayor Dial has come over because he wants to personally thank this young officer and give us some of the background on the actions that he took. Mayor Dial?
Yes, this time, I'll allow the chief to elaborate on the events of that evening. And after that, I will personally thank Mr. Everson for all of his efforts. We also are one member short. Our Chief of Police wanted to be here personally tonight to present an award to him. And this afternoon, unfortunately, I had a little problem with the Zion, had to go in for some surgery. So what we are going to do is extend an invitation to Mr. Everson to our next council meeting, at which the chief will present that award from the police department.
Jason Everson's a relatively new police officer for the Rapid City Police Department. He was hired at the beginning of December 2008, and he's been in training ever since. And a good part of that training is a 12-week police academy in Pierre. And Jason, along with his classmates from Rapid City, graduated from the training academy March 27, on a Friday. And so, as soon as they got their certificates and said their goodbyes, they headed home. And Jason hurried up and headed home to his, to his house in Box Elder. And later that evening, discovered that there was a house fire just two doors down from him. So he went there, tried to find a way to get into that house, thought he could hear something inside, and the flames were taking over this structure. He managed to force entry into this house somehow and helped to drag a burn victim, burn and smoke victim, out of that home. And subsequently, saved probably not one life, but two, because the husband of this victim was dead-set on staying there with his wife until the end. And Jason made it so that they were both able to, to escape that fire. So, I'm very proud of him. We're hoping that this is a reflection of our great hiring practices and that we've got a good, good police officer here. But I really think it has a lot to do with Jason's character and his bravery, and it's a good testament to who he is.[463.66][463.66](Applause)
What a way to start a career in the Rapid City Police Department. Incredible. This time, we also have our recognition of the Veteran of the Month. I could have Steve come on up. Let me just tell you a little bit about Steve. Let me go ahead and start reading this. "In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we're pleased to present the April 2009 Veteran of the Month recognition to Stephen D. Fueling. Steve was born in Itswich, England, not South Dakota, where his parents were stationed in the Air Force. He grew up in the Air Force and attended many different schools and graduated from Rapid City Central High School in 1982. After graduation from Western Dakota VOTET, in 1987, he entered the United States Air Force and was assigned to a loadmaster training program. He became a loadmaster aboard a C-141B Starlifter aircraft and acquired over 1,100 hours of flying time. Steve's missions included the invasion of Panama in December of 1989, and he was also deeply involved in many airdrops and rescue missions during times of natural disaster. After applying for an early out in 1990, Steve returned to college, and upon graduation from South Dakota State University, he was commissioned in May of 1996 as a Second Lieutenant in the United States Air Force. Upon re-entering the Air Force, Steve was assigned as an air weapons officer, and during this time, he flew many missions in South America during the drug wars. He was stationed at various bases around the world. He was in Korea, Kuwait, took part of, took part in Desert Fox Campaign, and Kosovo. His final assignment was at Luke Air Force Base in Arizona as a air weapons officer and a mission crew commander for the F-16 Training Squadron. Steve served in a, uh, Steve served a very rewarding career in the service of this country. One of his most memorable moments was flying to Vietnam to pick up and return MIA soldiers back to the United States. Steve left the Air Force in July of 2000 and returned to Rapid City to pursue business interests. He is currently part-owner of a bowling alley here in Rapid City and also works at Warp Industries. Steve is a life member of the Thelton Thai paternity and a courtesy member of the Chapter 29 Triad. He's involved in racing late-model cars and a crew chief of, and I'll give you a plug here, Number 10 Late Model Car. He's also involved in junior bowling. Stephen and his wife, Gwen, have three daughters, Brittany, is it, how do you pronounce it, Catlin? Caitlin, very good, and Elisa. Steve is especially proud of his military record and accomplishments, and is deserving of this special recognition. We are pleased to present Steve Fueling as a 2009 April Veteran of the Month. Congratulations, Steve.[660.82][660.82](Applause)
All right. Special, uh, special thanks to the mayor and everyone that came tonight. Just like to say a few words, not take up a lot of time. Being a veteran was extremely important and still is. My father, Dean, and my mom, Mary, are extremely active in the Chapter Triad 9, uh, 29 here in Rapid City. For those of you folks that don't know what that is, it's called the Retired and enlisted Association. They're out on Highway 44. They do an awful lot for the veterans here in Rapid City and the community involvement. They also fight for state and national rights for veterans. So if you ever get a chance to get out there and visit them, they'd love to show you around and what they're all about. I'd like to thank John from the nominations committee here for selecting me for Veteran of the Month, and also for all the veterans that are out there in the audience tonight, as well as the veterans that are in Rapid City. If you happen to come across one, thank them for their service sometime. Uh, means a lot. I appreciate you letting me and my family come and accept this award tonight. Thank you.[732.22][732.22](Applause)
Chief, you want to go ahead and come up? Mike Wonchwood can come up also. This is also a special time for us to recognize long-term employees of the City of Rapid City. And as our tradition is, we always have the department head come up. And so, Chief, if you'd give us a little bit of background about Mike's 30-year career.
Thank you.
Just want to say a few things. Chief Wrestler is Battalion Chief on the Rapid City Fire Department. And what our Battalion Chiefs do is they're actually shift commanders. They're the guys who make sure that all the firefighters are where they're supposed to be in the morning, and they handle all the emergency and non-emergency events that go on throughout the day. They respond to all the fires and, and large accidents and, and make sure everything goes how it's supposed to go. Throughout, throughout Mike's 30-year career, he's served in a lot of roles in the Fire Department. One, he's actually our official unofficial master of ceremonies at Fire Department events. Uh, he, he's got a very smooth approach, and at Chief Shepherd's retirement last year and several other events at, at our Missouri Valley Conference, he did that duty. What I'd like to thank and honor Mike for tonight is his continued dedication and leadership in the department. Uh, Mike has the drive and enthusiasm of, of a young firefighter recruit, but that comes with the, uh, the wisdom and the, the knowledge of a senior officer who truly cares about the department and our community. Uh, Mike continually goes above and beyond as he volunteers off-duty in our strategic planning process, on committees, as we work on our promotional process, as we work on our company officer development process. And, and I'm happy to say that, that Mike and I have become friends, and he's one of the few individuals on the department that I go to for counsel and advice, you know, as we think about how we're going to move the department ahead. A truly, you know, uh, both a formal and informal leader on our departments, and I'm glad that he's decided to stay with us a little while longer. Thank you, Mike.[913.62][913.62](Applause)
Thank you, Chief. I'm not sure. I recognize that guy, but those are, those are awful kind words. Anything I say up here, as heartfelt as I try to, try to make it, is going to sound a little cliched. So, with that disclaimer, um, I am just happy to be part of it all, truly. And it has been an honor and a privilege all this time. Time does fly when you're having fun, and, uh, it just doesn't get any better than this. So, having said that, the real point for me coming down here tonight is to express to everyone my deep and my profound thanks for giving me the opportunity to work for the City of Rapid City and its Fire Department for the last 30 years. It's been more than a privilege. It's been truly a delight. There's not very many jobs out there where every morning you have the, the real opportunity to help somebody and, and change their life a little bit. So, um, and for you Boy Scouts out there, it's true, being a firefighter is as cool as anybody can ever tell you it is. Guarantee that. Um, along the way, I've served for six different mayors and worked for five different fire chiefs. And I've worked with and for some of the truly greatest people that any of you could ever meet. And I owe those people a tremendous amount of gratitude for the teaching and the training and the guiding that they've done for me over the years to help me have the career that I've had. So, um, you don't do it by yourself, that's for sure. Um, but the people I really want to thank the most tonight are my family. My wife, Jody, will attest to the fact that it's not easy being married to somebody who sometimes seems like they're married to their job. And, uh, I know my daughters understood that I couldn't always be there for them when they needed me. So, so I want to thank you guys for that. Um, there's really no way I could have done it without them. And I asked my wife to get dolled up tonight just so she could come down here to be a part of this. But really, it's a little bit of trickery. I wanted you to be here so I could thank you publicly and put it on the record, that's that. If it weren't for you, I wouldn't have been able to have the career I had, honey. Um, and then finally, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for their continued support of the Fire Department and its mission. Um, everywhere from approving our budgets to supplying us with all the awesome trucks and equipment, and to providing all of its employees with truly respectable wages and benefits. So, thank you all very much for that.[1084.02][1084.02](Applause)
Thank you, everyone. That's always a pleasant night of the, part of the night when we get to recognize long-term employees and also employees that go above and beyond. Next thing on the agenda is the general public comment period. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at tonight's meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. Is there anyone that has any general concerns not on the agenda? We do not have any speaker request forms. If not, we will move on. We are on to the non-public hearing items. This is Items 4 through 91, and the chair would look for motion to open the public comment period for Item 4 through 49, please. We have a motion and a second, and discussion on that motion. And discussion. Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We are open to public comment. I do not have any speaker request forms on Items 4 through 49 inclusive. Does anyone wish to speak to those items, 4 through 49 inclusive? If not, the chair would look for motion to close the public comment period. We have a motion and a second, and discussion on that motion. Any discussion. Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. That does take us to the consent calendar, Items 4 through 49. If you have any items that you'd like to be pulled from the consent calendar, please turn on your light. I do have Item 14 and 17. Any additional, please turn on your light so we can have those removed. Any additional? Bob, which one?
Number 5 and number 6.
Number 5 and number 6. Okay. Any additional items? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker. Item 21. Okay. So far, we have 5, 6, 14, 17, and 21. Any additional items? Seeing none, the chair looked for motion to approve the consent calendar of Item 4 through 49 inclusive, with the exception of 5, 6, 14, 17, and 21. Do we have a motion? And, okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar, Items 4 through 49 inclusive, with the exception of 5, 6, 14, 17, and 21. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion. Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We are on to Item Number 5. Alderman Quaker, could you read on Items Number 5 and 6, please?
Items 5 and 6 are retail on-and-off wine licenses and malt beverage licenses for, and no video lottery, for sports saloon doing business as Sports Buzz Family Food and Fun on Mount Rushmore Road.
Okay, and?
Move approval. Remove to set for hearing.
I think we're looking for motion to continue. Let's go to Bob. What's the recommendation?
Yes, those need to be continued to the June 1st council meeting. They need to obtain a conditional use permit.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue Items 5 and 6 to the June 1st city council meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a clarification. Are we continuing the action to set the hearing, or are we setting the hearing for June 1st?
Bob?
That would be the earliest for the hearing.
So the action is to set the hearing at the June 1st council meeting?
Is that correct, Bob? Okay, very good. Set it right with the motion maker and the seconder. Okay. So the motion is to actually set Items 5 and 6 for a public hearing on June 1st at the city council meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. That does take us to Item 14. Mr. Kroger, could you please read in Item Number 14?
Item Number 14 is to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign an agreement between the City of Rapid City and Cattermas Lee &amp; Jackson Incorporated for the Robinsdale Reconstruction Projects Phases 1 and 2 in the amount not to exceed 449,750. I would move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? And just so you know, I did pull this, and the reason I pulled it is typically when we get to half-million dollars on a consent calendar, I'd like to pull those off, just to recognize that we actually gave the opportunity to, to take public input. So go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a half-million-dollar consultant fee. Do we know what the total projected cost of the construction would be?
Let's go to Dale Tech.
Thank you, Mayor. The projected, or estimated cost for Phase 1 and Phase 2, Projects 1 and 2 for each of those phases is approximately $6 million.
And we have a funding source for?
Yes, CIP. CIP, Streets, Water Sewer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Alderman Kroger, could you read in 17, please?
Item Number 17 is to authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign an agreement between the City of Rapid City and Cattermas Lee &amp; Jackson Incorporated for the East Boulevard and East North Street reconstruction project in the amount of $1,794,247. I would move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Dale, can you give us some background on the overlay that we're going to be doing and how this ties into that overlay on East North Street, and why we're doing this a few years before the, that, or the project should be done?
Yes, thank you. As you're aware, the condition of East North Street is, is not good. The city has approved a contract to, assignment contractors to go up and do some milling and overlaying of the really bad portions of East North Street, about a $300,000 project. That is anticipated to be done by mid-May. That project should buy us enough time to get all of East North reconstructed. We're anticipating a four-phase project for East North Street, probably starting on the east end or Campbell Street and working our way eastward. Therefore, we'll be through the LaCrosse Street intersection, probably with the first phase of the project, and then continuing on eastward all the way through East Boulevard onto Quincy Street with future phases.
If you could, why don't you go ahead and, and, just for the record, funding source and also, this is a joint project with?
Yeah, this is a joint project with the DOT. For a road swap agreement, about 20 years ago, the DOT agreed to pay for 50% of street costs. However, the city will be paying for any water sewer improvements that are there. Funding is through CIP. We've identified that, as well as the state funding for the entire project.
Total, I'm sorry, total cost?
Total estimated cost of the project's about $20 million.
Okay, very good.
And we started it a couple of years ahead of time. I asked us at Public Works because a lot of times the design would take at least a couple of years, and the funding sources and everything to come about for at least a couple of years. So, um, we decided to start this project and get it moving. So by the time we were ready to bid and build it, we would actually be ready to go. Am I correct?
That's correct. Since it's a DOT joint project, there's a lot more layers of, of reviews that we have to be done, environmental assessments and such. So, we're anticipating to bid the first project in, I believe, September of '10. So, just a little over a year from now. So there's a lot of, a lot of work to be done between now and then, but we want to make sure there's ample time there to get, get all the appropriate approvals through the DOT.
Thank you, Dale, for all your work in Public Works on this. It's something that the community, community's been looking for, is that overlay just to get started so we can get by until we get this project moving. So, thanks for all your hard work and your department. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, you know, I'm glad to see this being coming forward, too, and Ms. Hadcock asked some good questions, and Dale, there's some good comments. My concern was that at legal finance, we, we had approved an extension on another project that this company is working on. And so my concern is, is it's Item 38, or, yeah, Item 38, a time extension with them. And this, that, that one started in 2007, and I'm, I'm a little worried if this company is, is overworked, or if this one gets delayed. Do we have any safeguards in place to say, hey, we're looking at September of 2010 to get going. Can we hold them accountable?
Let's go to Dale Tech, our city engineer.
Yeah, these are two separate projects. The, the project with the time extension was a, I believe, a transportation study. And there were other reasons why they couldn't do that. I think there was some information that the city was waiting to provide.
They're waiting for the aerial flights.
There you go. And this project we're talking about for East North Street is a pure engineering design. So they're, they're two separate fields of, of expertise, if you will. And I believe Cattermas Lee &amp; Jackson has done a reasonable job in the past And I believe Kedermus Lee &amp; Jackson has done a reasonable job in the past on engineering projects, at least staying on, on track schedule-wise.
That, that was just my question. I just, I seen that later on and seen the extension, and, and I know with these overlays that, you know, we get a couple of good snowstorms, they, they ain't gonna last as long as we'd like them to believe. We end up going back out to two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. It worries me, especially when we have curbs falling apart and so forth. So that was my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. In terms of the selection of this, of the, of this particular consultant, can you tell us what process was followed and, and how many other firms were interviewed?
Alls I can, I guess, address, if I may, is that the consult was selected through our consultant selection procedure. They were selected prior to I coming to the city, so I don't know how many other firms were interviewed for, for this project. I would imagine it was at least three or four due to the dollar amount of the project.
Yeah, I've noticed that this firm is, has, I'm assuming it's because they, they do good work, but this firm has been receiving a lot of city work, and I guess I would share Alderman LaCroy's statement that if, you know, that I just want to make sure that this, this firm is, is able to complete the, is able to complete the work, and that this process is, is completely fair and impartial, so that other consultants have an, have a fair opportunity to, to compete as well.
Yes. Throughout the contract negotiation phase of, of the project, that, that's certainly one thing we look at, is the tasks involved. And if you look at the attachment for the agenda item, it's a really detailed task that identifies pretty much every step that they're gonna make, and that's, that is one thing that we request from them, is do they have the manpower to do the work? And, and they have showed us, shown us that, yes, they do have the resources and the manpower to do every task that's identified in the agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion or questions? I'll ask a, I'll ask a procedural question. Does anyone wish to speak before Alderwoman Deb Hancock speaks for a second time? And so please turn on your light. If not, we'll go to Alderwoman Deb Hancock.
Just in the line of what Sam and Lloyd are saying, when looking at the papers that Robert Ellis has sent us, some people had huge amounts of five million and some for some of the bidding process, and I, I just wanted to make sure, same thing, that we are spreading the, the monies around to the different engineering companies and not just giving the same ones projects. Because when you're looking at those totals, and I don't have them in front of me today, I see ones with higher, a lot higher dollars, and some with hardly anything or none in the last couple of years. So I'm hoping our process is working good. I don't think there's anything bad about that process. I would just hope that when we're talking about dollars for people and companies of Rapid City, that we are spreading that dollar around and that we are being fair on all circumstances. So I haven't looked totally into those projects, only the numbers at this point, just to go through that. And, and I am recognizing that some people are getting higher, higher amounts of work than others, so.
Thank you. They're gonna ask a procedural question. Does anyone wish to speak for a first time before Alderman Quaker speaks for a second time? If so, please turn on your light. If not, we'll go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. One last question. Who, who is, who is the principal or principals that is interfacing with the city on this particular project?
Mr. Tech?
Thank you. Rod San is the, I guess, the, the office manager here in Rapid City, and I believe he's probably the one that signs the contract. So I, I believe he would be the principal in charge of the project, if that's your question.
Well, I'll just ask the point-blank question. Is there, is there a former top city official that works at this firm, and were they involved in the interview process or any discussions in any way on this particular contract?
Mr. Tech?
Yes, there is. The former Public Works Director currently works for KLJ, and KLJ was selected prior to him going to work for them.
Alderman Quaker, anything else?
I think I need to learn more about that. I'd move to continue for two weeks.
Okay, we, we, we have a substitute motion and a second to continue this item for two weeks. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I, I guess I understand the line of questioning, but I'm wondering why are we continuing the item when our city engineer said that this project was, was done before that person went to work there? As if that person would do some sort of bidding for a company that he didn't work for. I just sat, Mr. Mayor, if I could have a little latitude. I, I just sat in on a, was part of a consultant selection process with a different project, and I would encourage our Public Works Department to, to, to make sure that council members are a part of that process, because I think you walk away from that process with a different understanding and a deeper understanding of what the process is and how it's actually done. Is the process fair? I guess as fair as, as fair is. But I, I'm not concerned if, if there's one company or several companies that seem to have more business than other companies. The question is, are they competent and can they do the job? It's not about who gets, who's, where someone's dollar amount is. If they're competent and they can handle the workload, and they've gone through that process, they should be awarded the work as it's gone through that consultant selection process. I, I don't understand why we need to continue this item, and I will be voting no against the continuation.
Okay, very good. Just a reminder, the substitute motion on the floor is a continuation motion, so if we can limit it, the discussion to the continuation motion, and then whether that votes, whether that vote goes up or down, then we can come back to the, to the main motion. Okay, let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to figure out how to put this into a continuation. I wanted to make some, I, I, I was also part of the selection process, not on this particular item, but I think that at some time, it's gonna, it's going to be worthy of a, of a, of a larger discussion. In, in reference to my, my philosophy and, and looking at getting the best price when you have several engineering firms in our community that are qualified. So I probably will be voting no on the continuation of this, and, and understanding that this has already been, been through the process. You know, we, we're not looking at changing the process today, but I think at some point we need to talk about that process. I think there's some opportunity there. So that'll be my comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, continuation motion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's be frank, the reason I offered the motion to continue is, is as soon as I was informed that the contract had been awarded before this individual worked for this firm, once we think about the fact that before this individual worked for this firm, he worked for the city, I think that warrants a continuation motion, or we need to have a full discussion about how this particular contract was awarded tonight. So that's why I just simply offered a continuation motion, because I was applying the logic of, of, of look, if the contract was awarded before this individual worked for this firm, then that means it was awarded when he worked for the city, or could have been. And rather than making a big deal out of it tonight, I wanted to continue it so we could have further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, let's see, I'm going to go to Alderman Kroger first, and I'll come back to Alderman Chapman, who has the, had the opportunity to speak. So let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. Our previous item that I read in the Robbinsdale Reconstruction Project, I sat in on those interviews, and I guess my comment, I've sat on numerous interviews, and I don't believe the Public Works Director sits in on those interviews and makes any of those decisions, does he? I've never sat on one that, where the public director, Public Works Director sits on, on the interview committee and, and is, and is one of the people that picks, you know, the firm to do the work. So I guess at this point in time, I can't support the motion to continue either. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to, I'll ask procedural questions. Does anyone wish to speak before Alderman Qua, or Alderman Chapman speaks for a second time? And so turn on your light. Now, we'll go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think Alderman Kroger hit my comments, and I echo that, which, you know, I, I just encourage that council members sit in on that process, because if you are part of that process, you will see that, I think by some of the comments I've heard, we're, we're giving too much credit or power to one person around here, that they singly and solely make that decision in terms of who gets a contract around here. That's not the way it works. I mean, there is a process that you go through, and several people play a part in that process. It's not just one person ultimately saying, I think that this firm should get the contract. Based on that, in my mind, I don't see why there, why this merits a continuation.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is continuation motion. Let's go to Alderman Bill O'Krepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I guess I second it because I had one question. Now I've got two. First of all is, so the Public Works Director had, or this individual that now works for this company, he, he had nothing to do with the selection at all?
Let's go to Dale Tech.
I guess I don't have enough information to answer that question. I was not here at that time. I don't know if the former Public Works Director, who now works for said firm, had any involvement in that selection process.
Would you have a second question, Mayor?
Go ahead.
So you wouldn't know how long the timeframe from the time that he was working for the city until this project, and then now he's working for this company? I mean, was he working for the city like for a year or two after this decision was made, or was he gone before? You know, what's the timelines? Here I'm gone, this one I'm gone. Military, we have, typically you can't work for a contractor, government contractor, within two or three years from retiring or getting out of the military. And so what's, what's, what's the answer here? And the only reason why I seconded that motion is because it'd be kind of interesting to know this kind of stuff.
Mr. Tech?
If I were to hazard a guess, I would say he, there was a six-month timeframe from the time he left city employment to the time he started with this firm.
Six months?
Six months.
Thank you.
Motion on the floor is a substitute motion to continue. Additional discussion on that motion? Malcolm, I think you've spoke twice on the continuation motion. My apologies. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the continuation motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Let's take a quick roll call, just to make sure we have it on the record.
Aye.
Kroger? Hancock? LaCroy?
No.
Wyffenbach?
No.
Krepke?
Aye.
Chapman?
Okay, motion fails on a five to two vote, correct? We are back to the original motion. Original motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussions on that? Okay, now I'm gonna run a little bit of problems here, because some folks have actually spoken twice on the original motion. So, um, yeah, I know. I'm gonna go to, tell you what. If, if there's no objection by the council, we'll give everybody the opportunity to speak one more time. Is there any objection to the chair doing that? Any objections? If so, you just wave at me. Okay. If not, we'll allow, since we weren't actually taking a hard count on the number of times, I don't want to take a guess at people that have actually spoken twice, so I'm gonna give everybody a little bit of latitude, at least have them have the opportunity to speak at least one more time. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess we're going back to, I mean, that's some good information that we, that has just come out, 'cause I didn't know that. But my main concern was, and that's why I brought it up, was what happens if they're once get continued on, and that still is a concern, and I'll keep an eye on that. I didn't, I wasn't in favor of continuing on, because I don't think, I've been on the selection process, along with several of the council members, and I don't think it's one-sided. But I do, it does concern me when one company is getting most of the business, even though they are well-qualified. It does concern me. And I like to see it, it spread around locally, as well as with just one firm, so. But that, that is my main concern, is that this doesn't get continued on again. And I'll, I'll keep on this, and I'll, and I'll remind my council members of that if it comes up again, that we need to move forward on this and get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd, like, I'll reiterate the fact, I was on the, the selection committee and, and still continue to, to look at this matter of, of, because one of the questions I asked originally when we started the process was, who's qualified? What engineering firms are qualified to do this job? And my answer was basically all of them, for water, sewer, streets. So I, I have some concern about how we best get the best price for the citizens and the taxpayers. So since this is on the table now, I'm gonna put that out on the table to our, to, to my colleagues and to the staff, that, you know, continue to pursue this and, and find options that, that lead to not only the best work, but if everyone's qualified, then, then maybe we should look at the best pricing, too. As my understanding, none of these projects are bid out at all. They're, they're, they're based upon qualifications, and, and somebody comes in, and, and they, there's four or five groups that are picked, they, they, they speak their turn, they present their facts, they present their case, decision is made. So I just, to let everybody know, that's where my thought process is heading. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for point of clarification, my understanding is because of the fact that this one has federal money coming through the state, through federal statute, you cannot, they cannot specify what the dollar amount, is that correct, Jason? I think, did we go through this? Or maybe that was, maybe that was Robert Ellis that actually looked up that, that act. There's actually a specific act, congressional act, that, that says if there's dollar amounts involved, you cannot use the dollar, the actual dollar amount within the decision. Matter of fact, I don't even believe that you're even allowed to list it in the consultant selection process if there's federal money involved. I know it sounds somewhat contrary to us conservatives out here, but, but if there's federal money involved, you, they can't even, literally, they cannot even list the amount of the bid in the contract, in the proposal. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, just in looking at the, the big picture here, and quite frankly, if I was going, you know, when raising these questions on item seventeen, to have been consistent, I probably could have, could have and should have raised questions on item fourteen as well. But the point, the point that I'm making here is I don't want to delay the projects at all. I want to make sure that this process is completely fair and above board. And so I agree, I do not want to be, this project to be unduly delayed, but at the same time, it needs to be fair. When was the, the contract awarded? We don't know. Was the former Public Works Director involved in any way, shape, or form? We don't know. And so in voting for this tonight, I'm going to ask that this be looked into, and if it turns out that there, there was involvement, then I think that the council needs to get involved and take another close look at this, because, you know, in the span of half an hour here, we're awarding over two-point-three million dollars in consulting contracts to, to, to one firm. And basic questions about the word of these contracts cannot be answered tonight, and that should be a concern. And I would expect that the answer, the answers be provided to the council and the community. Thank you.
Okay. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval signify. Ron, can you keep it real, 'cause I told everybody?
Do we need an amendment or something to add that, or?
It's, it'd be inappropriate to add it to the motion on the floor. That certainly can be brought up through the committee process, but the motion on the floor is to authorize the mayor and the finance officer to sign an agreement. Anything above and beyond that would, would be inappropriate, but you can certainly take that up through the normal process.
Well, my other question would be, if, if we're gonna state a federal statute or something, is that gonna be made available to us, so we can see that?
Sure, we can, we can forward that on.
Will you have that for us, Jason? I mean, I can, I'm not, it's not comfortable just asking Jason a question. I'd prefer that the council would vote on that, if maybe that's a Second Amendment or something, to require to get that federal statute.
Let's go to Jason Green, and then, okay, go ahead, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor.[1736.83]
I think the appropriate way to bring this back to the council for discussion is through the committee process because it's separate from the item that's before you. You're being asked to vote up or down on a contract, and we're delving into a collateral process here. We can certainly have that discussion, and I'll be happy to provide you the information that you've requested, but I think it properly belongs in a different forum first.
Very good. Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Additional discussion on that motion? Let's go to Malcolm Chapman. Nothing else? Okay. Seeing no further lights, we're going to a vote. All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to item number twenty-one. Alderman Quaker, could you please read that in?
Item twenty-one is approved sending the request from Bob Connect to require public access to restrooms to the plumbing board for consideration and recommendation yield to the floor.
Okay, could we have a motion, please? I'm sorry, what was the motion? Okay, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Do we have a second? We've got to get this off the table, you guys. Okay, you can't have discussion on tabling motions. You still want a second to motion? Okay. We have a motion and a second to table. There is no discussion on tabling motions. We go directly to a vote. All is in favor of the tabling motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes with one no from Alderman Chapman. I believe that's correct. Okay, thank you, everyone. That does take us to the end of the consent calendar. We are on to the non-consent calendar, items fifty through ninety-one, fifty through ninety-one. Chair will look for a motion to open the public comment period on items fifty through ninety-one inclusive. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are into the public comment period. We do have a couple different speaker request forms. First speaker request form is from Michael Sanborn on item number fifty-four, twenty-one oh-two Rio Drive. And Mr. Sanborn, we know who you are, but if you could identify yourself for the record. And the other thing is, just a reminder for everyone, we do time this part of the evening, and we do have a two-minute time period, so if you just watch the clocks and when it turns yellow, you know your time's coming to an end. Oh, I'm sorry. We got your mic on. My apologies, Mike.
Okay. I said, "I suspect more than one of you have cursed my name on more than one occasion, but it's Michael Sanborn, and I'm from Rapid City. I'm here tonight to urge you, urge the council to approve the first reading of ordinance fifty-five thirteen without amendment, and would ask the council to also consider an additional ordinance prohibiting the release of domestic waterfowl into public water inside Rapid City, including Rapid Creek, Canyon Lake, and Memorial Ponds. This will prevent future problems with managing waterfowl at Canyon Lake and throughout the city. I'd urge you also to talk to your game fish and parks and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service representatives and take their advice. Thank you very much."
Thank you, Mr. Sanborn. We also have a speaker request form on item number eighty-one from Lyle Hendrickson, thirty-six eighty-five Sturgis Road. There again, this is on item eighty-one, everyone. And there again, if you just identify yourself for the record, please.
I'm Lyle Hendrickson. I'm the architect working on the project. Item eighty-one, I believe, is allowing a curb cut on Saint Ange Street and not modifying the existing roll top curb at that piece of property.
Okay. Did you have anything else to add?
There's like five items. Do we want to discuss them all at this point, or one at a time?
No, one should discuss them all because you do have basically about three minutes, so.
The other four items deal with oh-nine EX zero-three-five deals with driveway width of sixteen to twenty-eight feet on commercial property. We are requesting that the existing curb cuts that exist on this parcel of property remain as is. The curb cuts on that piece of property vary from twenty-nine-three to thirty-nine-eight on West Main, and on Saint Ange, the curb cuts are forty-two-six and twenty-six feet. On item oh-nine EX zero-three-six, that deals with access from the less-traveled street. The way the street design criteria is set up, according to that, we would not have a curb cut allowed on West Main. We'd have to have only a curb cut on Saint Ange. We are requesting that these curb cuts on Saint Ange and West Main remain the same. The next item, oh-nine EX zero-three-seven, is a corner clearance, and what we are requesting again is that we have the existing curb cuts, and we'd like to maintain those existing curb cuts. If we follow the design criteria manual, we would have to be forty feet from Saint Ange, forty feet from the intersection, and right now, that would severely limit our access. Item oh-nine EX zero-three-nine is a location of the curb cuts to the property, or the curb cuts across the street. On Saint Ange, there are none. Across the street is a guard camp. That curb cut aligns with Saint Ange, and we're requesting that they mean the same.
Thank you, sir. We also have a speaker request form from Tom Polackey. Did I get it across? You can't do that. Sorry.
I'm the owner of this property, and we've contracted with Lyle. We've gone through quite a lengthy process since January to work on this project. We want to do a simple remodel, adding ADA restrooms and some, C-Store, remove some of the old building, the old kiosk in that area, and to improve the general look of that corner. We have met with staff numerous times, and we want to maintain the curb cuts as is. Competitors down the road have three curb cuts on West Main. We have two, and we want to maintain what we have. We've conceded various parts along this project. We've conceded to retitle an adjacent lot to not be able to be sold separate from this lot so that parking and landscaping can be put together. We've also conceded on a form of the rolled curb versus the regular curb, if Saint Ange is ever repaired or changed, and probably will be at some point. So we feel that we, this is an existing business. Anything, all the things that we are requesting exist there. We're doing a simple remodel to a structure that doesn't affect any of the traffic flow in the adjoining properties. And so we don't feel that we are affecting the traffic flow in the area, and so we've gone through various processes and got to this point, and the only objections or changes are reducing curb cuts. And we will have less curb cuts in some of our adjoining neighbors with what we have proposed, and we wish to keep it the same as proposed on our plan.
And that was a Polackey? Did I get it right?
Poliski.
Poliski. Okay.
That's fine. Good Czech name.
Very good. Okay, thank you so much. Any additional comments? You still have a little bit of time.
I would just say, we are longtime standing, good business partners in the city of Rapid City, involved in many charitable and other activities. We hope to be good citizens, and we feel this is an improvement to the city, and we hope it'll, that it'll be worthwhile to the neighborhood, and we think that we have worked with the staff and through our architect to the best of our ability to make this improvement, which is fairly straightforward and will improve the neighborhood, in our opinion.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I also have a speaker request form on item number seventy-four from Hanny Shaffey, five-twenty-eight Kansas City Street. There again, Mr. Shaffey, if you identify yourself for the record.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Hanny Shaffey with Dream Design International at five-twenty-eight Kansas City Street. Item seventy-four is in regard to tax increment district sixty-two, which was, which we have petitioned the city council in two thousand seven, I believe, to create, to revitalize downtown, and I guess you, the council wanted to know the status of that tax increment district. In two thousand seven, the taxes that were due are sixty-nine thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars to be paid in two thousand eight, and the taxes that are due in two thousand eight are a hundred and twenty-six thousand thirty dollars that are due in two thousand nine. And the, this, these numbers do not include the new bank west that is going to be built at, or that is being built at, or near the old Dan's supermarket site. This stiff was created to revitalize downtown, and in the process, create a solution for the parking issues that are existing downtown, and in the revitalization process to create some residential places downtown. We worked with the city for a long time on that, for about approximately a year and a half or so, and we could not finalize the agreements because of certain items. I believe dissolving this tax increment district will be disservice to the public because those taxes can be utilized to resolve the issues with the parking and do create some other activities besides resolving the parking issues. The cost to the taxpayers as a result of this tax increment district is very small compared to the cost of paying for the parking stalls themselves. We spent a lot of money creating that tax increment district and doing the historical preservation items or issues to make sure that any structure there could address such issues and cater to the downtown businesses and resolve their issues. We would like to request that the council keep that tax increment district, and we hope to work with the city council on resolving those issues and resolve and come into a conclusion to this. It can be done in a phased program or in a process that is fair to all parties involved. I thank you for your time, and I look forward to talking with you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaffey. I have no speaker, additional speaker request forms on items fifty through ninety-one. Anyone else wish to speak to any items fifty through ninety-one inclusive? Not the chair will look for a motion to close the public comment period. Oh, hey, oh, I'm sorry. We do have a taker. Sir, if you could go ahead and come up to the podium there, and if you would identify yourself for the record, and also the item that you wish to speak about.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name is Bruce Peterson, and I want to speak about item seventy-five.
Okay, go ahead, please.
And I've provided some documentation mostly about my daughter Tara, whose life was saved through the efforts of the Rapid City Fire Department and their ambulance services and the training that the Rapid City Police Department has saved. And when I first talked with Mr. Preston last September about the possibility of the police department having these devices. So I just want to thank the mayor and the council and all you people for moving forward on this to make it happen, because I think with these, then the police department and the other emergency services can help to, can save somebody else's life like they did. It's just another tool in their, in all of their, that they can use for their services. So I'd like you to urge, urge you to just approve this. Okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, and I'm glad to see your daughter's doing very well. I remember when you were down at the fire department when we gave the paramedics the award.
Sure, that's right.
Yep. Glad to see she's doing well. Okay, any additional speaker requests on items fifty through ninety-one inclusive? If not, the chair will look for a motion to close the public comment period, items fifty through ninety-one inclusive. Have a motion and second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We're on to item number fifty, under ordinances, please.
Item fifty is first reading of ordinance fifty-five-ten, ordinance meeting seventeen point oh-six municipal code for rezoning from no-use district to general commercial district located west of Valley Drive and north of South Dakota Highway forty-four. Move approval of first reading.
We have a motion and a second for approval of first reading. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Fifty-one, please.
Item fifty-one is first reading of ordinance fifty-five-eleven, and ordinance meeting seventeen point oh-six municipal code for rezoning within the described properties requested by the city from no-use district to general commercial district located west of Valley Drive and north of South Dakota Highway forty-four. Move approval of first reading.
We have a motion, second for approval of first reading of ordinance fifty-five-eleven. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Fifty-two, please.
Item fifty-two is first reading of ordinance fifty-five-twelve, and ordinance meeting seventeen point oh-six municipal code for rezoning within the described properties requested by the city of Rapid City for rezoning from no-use district to low-dency residential district located west of Valley Drive and north of South Dakota Highway forty-four. Move approval.
We have a motion and second approval of first reading of ordinance fifty-five-twelve. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Fifty-three, please.
Item fifty-three is first reading of ordinance fifty-five-thirteen, ordinance meeting seventeen point oh-six municipal code for rezoning within the described properties requested by Dream Design International, Inc., for rezoning from medium-dency residential district to office-commercial district located at three-thirty-six Mead Street. Move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval of first reading of ordinance fifty-five-thirteen. Any discussion on that motion? Yes, sir.
If I could ask a-
Absolutely. Go ahead. Alderman Quaker.
Can I ask what's being proposed for the heart of this residential area?
Let's go to Bob Dominic.
I believe it was a dental office.
Is that next to the dental office?
I believe that's what it was. That's what I recall.
Okay, anything else?
I'll wait till it comes back through.
Okay. Motion on the floor is for approval, first reading. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item fifty-four, please.
Item fifty-four is first reading of ordinance fifty-five-oh-one to prohibit the feeding of wildlife and waterfowl in the city of Rapid City by establishing chapter six-point-one-six of the Rapid City Municipal Code, yield to the floor.
We have a motion, please.
Mayor.
And do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's go to, I'm going to go to Alderman Chapman, then we'll come back to Alderman Quaker. Let's go to Alderman Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a, Karen Olson emailed me and called today and asked if I would read a statement that she prepared. She called from the Green Cities Conference, and if I can get a plug in for that. There are elected officials and staff and four private entities that are in Portland right now talking about sustainability and the importance of that for the future of this country, and I just appreciate them being there. But anyway, she sent this from, it's a long statement, but I'll read it. Having been a part of the multi-year process that has brought tonight's ordinance forward for consideration, I thought a few facts would be helpful in making the decision. The Urban Wildlife Committee, which is the recommending body, is a very diverse group with membership that includes folks from the South Dakota Game Fish and Parks, various environmental and bird and wildlife background, and interested citizens. More than a year ago, an education program concerning feeding of waterfowl in various city sites begun. Two brochures, one designed for children and one for adults, were developed to begin educating the public about the problems created by feeding ducks and other waterfowl at Canyon Lake Park and other city sites. The brochures distributed to various sites in the community talked about the unhealthy feed, i.e. stale bread, and the problems of changing normal migratory living patterns, i.e. waterfowl remaining year-round and/or near Canyon Lake Park. In a healthy environment, geese, mallards, wood ducks, golden eyes, and other migratory birds have a healthy pattern of flying north in the summer, many as far as Canada and Alaska and south to southern United States and Mexico for winter. Because of feeding, Rapid City has seen a dramatic increase in waterfowl numbers at Canyon Lake Park. Between two thousand three and two thousand seven, the most recent Christmas bird counts, waterfowl populations have been, have more than doubled. Canadian geese have gone from four hundred thirty-nine in two thousand three to one thousand four hundred thirty-nine in two thousand seven, with total waterfowl numbers in Canyon Lake at two thousand eight hundred seventy-two. Studies show that large concentrations of birds in single areas lead to unhealthy and unsafe living conditions for both birds and humans. Those who walk near Canyon Lake are all well aware of the fecal matter on both grass and sidewalks. A greater concern is this matter in the lake itself, Rapid City's main source surface water supply. While healthy and safety has been the Urban Wildlife Committee's primary concern, problems of aggressive geese and geese overgrazing golf courses and public parks, both private and public, have been discussed. In attempting to bring waterfowl populations to healthy numbers, the committee realized that feeding wasn't compatible with the goal of reducing numbers. Simply put, the city couldn't on one hand continue to allow and encourage waterfowl feeding while attempting to reduce- while attempting to reduce total numbers of waterfowl. Containing bird feeding to the station built at Canyon Lake Park simply hasn't worked. Supporting this plan is good for the health and safety of Rapid City and Rapid City citizens. And again, this was a statement from Alderman Karen Olson, and thank you for allowing me to read it.
Okay, very good. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to offer an amendment to the motion on the floor, and the amendment is as follows. Would offer a motion to amend the penalty section of this ordinance to write warnings only for the balance of two thousand and nine. For two thousand and ten, a fine of up to twenty-five dollars plus court costs. Two thousand and eleven, a fine of up to fifty dollars plus court costs, starting January one of two thousand and twelve, up to the maximum allowable by law. And that is my amendment.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend. And we will take discussion on the amendment only, and then we'll either vote the amendment up or down, and then we'll be back to the original motion either as amended or in its original format. So on the amendment only, please, let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
On fining people for feeding the ducks, I don't think is going to be the solution. I think we built a area for ducks to be, make a habitat. We did it for a reason. We've had it there, I don't know how many years, many, many years. And now, the very taxpayers that paid to get this built and get this done, and why, big reason why we did it is because for duck habitat and for kids and people to come enjoy. And I can tell you from all the people I've talked to, they're not too happy about us fining them for something that they have enjoyed for years. Now, do we need to reduce the numbers for health and safety reasons? I think we do. I think we need to reduce it so there is no problem with a disease or something like that that happens when things are mitigated or animals or trees or anything are outpopulated. Long story short, I'm not in favor of any kind of fining on people. You have a lot of grandmas bringing their, and grandpas bringing their kids there to the park that they have done this for thirty-some years, and now all of a sudden, you're going to tell them we're going to fine them for feeding the ducks and doing something they have enjoyed for many years. I'm not in favor of that. Let's, let's take care of the problem, find the solution, but not pay our tax, our taxpayers, the very people that built this, for doing something they enjoy doing.
Thank you. Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a concern with the amendment. It's the part about directing through the ordinance that only warnings be implemented. Essentially, you're saying something is illegal, but we're not going to do anything about it. My recommendation is that you would keep the rest of the graduated fine scale that was proposed, but simply administratively determine that we're not going to issue citations for, with a fine amount other than written warnings for the balance of two thousand and nine. Otherwise, you set up a real situation where the whole ordinance may be unenforceable.
Okay, I'm going to go back to the motion maker and ask what his desire is.
I'm not sure if it's fair for me to do this to the mayor, but I will support that if, if he and the city attorney's office will commit to making sure that actual tickets are not written until two thousand and ten. That's probably unfair, but.
Let's go back to Jason Green, our City Attorney.
Well, I can't say anything about writing tickets because I don't do that, but I am in charge of the people who prosecute city ordinance violations, and I'll assure the council that if that's the intent and that's the direction from the council, I'll be happy to honor that we treat these as warnings for the balance of two thousand and nine.
Okay. If the second year will accept my change, then I'd like to do as he suggested.
Okay. I'm going to go to either Jason or back to Sam and ask for them to clarify the motion on the floor. I would assume we're going to go to twenty-five dollars for the remainder of two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten to fifty dollars in two thousand and eleven, and then, then up to the maximum allowed under ordinance in two thousand and twelve. Get that right?
Starting January one, two thousand and twelve.
Okay.
And then, so that is, that is my amendment, and then the intent.
With the understanding.
Okay.
Okay, additional comments or discussion on the amendment only, please. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the comments about feeding the ducks. I think a lot of people in Rapid City and their grandkids and whoever grew up on feeding the ducks. And then, at first, when I heard the ordinance against feeding the ducks, I was, I was against it. And then after visiting with Alderman Olson and the thought process on, on what it's really doing to the ducks is my main issue. I don't really care if they leave their waste all over there or not. There was a place built for that, but what it's doing to the ducks overall, with them inbreeding, not being able to fly, not migrating, those things, people don't understand that, and I'm hoping that the city takes a role in, in using that duck area to maybe build some sort of monument in reference to those ducks and say, I mean, places that I've visited that had, had little plaques put up that, you know, talk about the species of the ducks, talks about the migration of the ducks, and talks about, you know, you do not feed the ducks, and then you, you put something in there that says, this is why you don't feed the ducks. I mean, just fining somebody outright didn't seem sensible to me, but if it's the only way we can get people to save the ducks, I guess that's, I'll support that. But I'm hoping that the city and the Parks Department takes on a role to explain to people why you can't feed those ducks and what it's doing to the ducks, not, not the people around them. I don't really care about that. I'm more concerned about what it's doing to the ducks, so. With that being said, I'll support the fine as it's graduated, and there's no, you know, we won't enforce it in two thousand and nine to help people get used to it. What I would like, an educational opportunity there to tell the people why you can't feed those ducks. And I think people, once they understand that and what it's doing to the ducks, I think they'll have no problem not feeding the ducks. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Bill O'Kreppke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You said we can't use, I got a couple of points here. You said we can't issue, can't have a warning. I mean, we do the warning for the parking, so why can't we do the warning for the duck feeding?
I'm not sure. Let's go to Jason Green for that.
Yeah.
You really can't equate the duck issue to the parking issue. Parking is its own animal that has its own norms that have evolved over time. What you're doing here is you're enacting an ordinance. And if you write a mandatory warning into it, you're saying, we have an ordinance, but we really don't want anybody to pay attention to it. So that's really the difference, is they're apples and oranges.
And, okay, Mr. O'Kreppke, stove the floor, sir.
Thank you. You know, I have to agree with, with Alderwoman Hadcock. I've been struggling with this thing as well. I don't mind, I don't mind a lot what's going on with the, with thinning out the flock, but saying that you can't feed the ducks is probably going a little beyond the call of duty. You know, my father-in-law, I probably, I don't know if I told the story now, but my father-in-law, he used to, I mean, he lived, when he was still alive, he lived to get up in the morning, break up some bread, make a hike down to the, down to the pond, and feed the ducks there. I mean, he lived for that, and I knew that, you know, he'd take my, my daughter when she was young, and there was some really good bonding time that they had together. And I'm not so sure if this is the right thing to do by saying, I'm sorry, grandmas and grandpas and dads, you can't take your, and moms, you can't take your kids and, and spend some quality time with some of the animals here in the community. I'm not sure if what we're doing here is meeting the objective. And correct me if I'm right, you know, help me with the objective that we're trying to do here, but in my mind, it's to make sure that we have, that the ducks that are here, the animals and birds that are here are healthy. I mean, that's the objective, in my opinion. And so, if we say you're not going to feed the birds, is that going to have a direct relationship to the quality of the birds that are still living here? And I suggest it isn't. I mean, we don't feed the deer, but we still have deer problems, and we still have to harvest the deers. And so, I'm not so sure by feeding, by saying that you can't feed the ducks and the geese and the other birds, is that's going to reach objectives of, of having quality flocks and birds that are still here. I firmly believe in my heart of hearts that if we keep the numbers down through harvesting or however you want to call it, then I think we can still have both. I still think we can, we can still let the, the grandmas and the grandpas still take their grandkids out and, and have some quality time. And on the flip side, we can still have a quality flock as well. The objective in my mind is quality birds, and if not feeding them is going to make sure that we have a quality birds that are left, then I may go along with it, but I don't believe by passing this saying that you can't feed the birds is going to make quality, have, increase the quality of the, of the remaining birds. We need to do a harvesting, and if we keep the numbers down, we can still make it work, and then everybody can be happy. And so, and I'm going to, I'll yield the, any particular motions to my colleagues, but to me, it's, it's the objective and how are we reaching that? And, and I don't want to sit here and have some grandma and grandpa come over here with her little walker and making one step, one inch at a time, and complaining that they've got a fifty-dollar ticket because they took their granddaughter or grandson to feed the birds. I don't want that call, and I don't want to have to sit here and look at it. So as we, as we go forward, I mean, this is the first reading, and we still got some time to look at it. But I would, I would ask you to, to look in your hearts and, and see what we're really trying to do here. Harvesting the birds is a good idea. Saying that you can't feed the birds is not. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. I can certainly support the, the motion on the floor. I mean, we as a city kind of go from one extreme to another. A number of years ago, we spent a lot of money to make a duck feeding area out of Canyon Lake, and today we're talking about fining people for feeding the ducks out there. But I believe one of the reasons why Alderman Quaker made the motion to not enforce any penalties this year was, is actually, there's no signage out in Canyon Lake. The signage that's out there is so small, you can't even read it. So number one, I think what we need to do is to have our sign shop start making some signs and posting them out in Canyon Lake area and over at Storybook Island and such, stating, you know, do not feed the ducks. And I think another thing we need to do that Alderman Wyffenbach talked about was is we need to get a hold of Game Fish and Parks along with the city. I think we need to share costs and do signings out in Canyon Lake and maybe over at Storybook Island where there's a lot of ducks and geese. And to show what, show pictures of the ducks and the geese and what kinds they are, and so the kids and that kind of stuff can, instead of feeding them, maybe look at them and relate to the sign saying, oh, there's, you know, there's a snow goose, there's a Canadian goose, there's a mallard, or whatever it might be. And on the bottom of that sign, explain reasons why they should not be feeding the ducks and geese. And I think that'll go a long ways to solving the problem and not being the city the bad guy of giving a healthy fine. But we do need to educate the people, and we have not done that. We got a sign shop where we can make the signs to let the people know that they shouldn't be feeding them. And I think Game Fish and Parks would look at probably doing a sign, a couple of signs, big signs showing the species and their names and stuff, and then explaining why we should not be feeding the wildlife. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy. Just a reminder for everyone, the motion on the floor is amended, the amendment on the floor. Alderman LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Mr. Kroger hit it right on. I mean, I think that's where we need to go personally, is the signage and so forth. It was Ron's idea, that's, I think that's where we need to go. One other comment I heard from Mr. Sandborn is maybe an ordinance on, on the releasing of other birds and the, having an ordinance on that. You know, if you're releasing other birds that aren't supposed to be there, that you bought at the store, we shouldn't.
Exotics.
Exotics, then set the fine in ordinance for that. I totally agree with that part of it. But I would like to see, let's try the signage first. I mean, the little pamphlets and the boxes are nice, but people walk by them, you know. And a sign, explaining it would be perfect. And I guess one of my questions would be is, is, seems like this was a two-part section that came forward. One was to reduce the population. Have we passed that, to move that forward? And so, if we're doing that to reduce the population, that was our biggest concern, and that's something that we should keep an eye on. And so, I'm not going to support the motion on the floor after what I've heard because I think we need to do the signage, and I'd support something along those lines. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to, whoops, I'm going to go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman, and then we'll go to Deb Hadcock, who already had the opportunity to speak. So we'll go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can support the motion on the floor, and I, I think I see where Sam's going, that there probably should be some sort of fines in place, but graduated over a period of time and maybe acclimate people to that, that this is going to happen. But I just want to, just let the council know that the ordinance is just one piece of this. I mean, we've already approved a management plan that came forth that talked about education. And in what I read from Karen, she said, having been part of a multi-year process. So I mean, this isn't something that's just coming tonight. I mean, there's been this education campaign that's been out there already. So, and part of that management plan and part of the, the other piece that we approved is talking about signage and how to educate and have that conversation with the public. And I agree with Ron that if, over a period of time, if you, if we can educate each other on why it's important not to feed bad food, I think we'll get there. So I think we're, we're saying the same things, and we want to get to the same end. It's just, we're taking some different paths. I will.
Thank you. Let's go to, let me answer the procedural question. Does anyone wish to speak before Alderwoman Hadcock speaks for a second sign? If so, turn on your light. Don't let her speak? Okay. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Just a couple of things, if it's, I don't think this is that hard. We need population reduction, so we mitigate the ducks. And number two, feeding of the ducks, bad food. So why don't we just add, like we did the fish hatchery, and add some duck feed out there and let the people still feed the ducks, but feed them the food that's for ducks? I'm telling you guys, the enjoyment of what people get for feeding the ducks outweighs what you're going to give them for the fines and the things that they're going to have. And I think you're going to have a lot of people coming in on this issue after you start fining people, and I'm, I'm not willing to do that. So unless we can find something else, I don't think it's that hard. We need a reduction in harvesting done and some way let the people feed the ducks so they supposedly, at this point, I know they do have duck feed, feed them good food then. I think that's part of the education, and we can put those signs up of what that means when you feed them bread and everything else for an education, so.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank Alderwoman Hadcock for her concerns, and I'd like to point out the following, that, you know, I too, when this first discussion first started occurring, you know, I, you know, I had concerns about ending the practice of, of feeding the ducks. But I, I have seen the mess that, that it has created out there. And I also, from personal experience, a few years ago, my parents came out from Northwest Isle and brought corn from the farm. The ducks love the corn compared to the processed bread that they always get. And one of my daughters had her hand out, and the fingers were curled up a little bit like this with corn, and a Canadian goose started coming after her. And I, I got between them and scared off the goose. And, but it, it made me really think about whether feeding the ducks was a good idea, and I'm, and the geese. And I think it is time that we move forward with ending this practice, but I think we need to end it gently and, and not shock people with, with a massive fine. I think it needs to be a gentle public education program because as Alderman Kroger and others have stated, the taxpayers have, have in the past, and the, and city halls in the past spent tremendous amounts of money encouraging the feeding of the ducks. So laying my cards on the table, if this amendment fails, I'm voting against the, the ordinance because I cannot in good conscience support all of a sudden a five-hundred-dollar fine for feeding the ducks. But I do think that we need to move forward with passing this amendment and passing, and passing first reading. I would encourage my colleagues to vote for the amendment on the floor. Thank you.
Very good. I see no additional lights. The motion on the floor is the amendment. Everyone clear on the, on the amendment? Is there any question? Now, we will go to the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's take a quick roll call, please. This is a simple majority vote.
Kroger?
Aye.
Hadcock? LaCroy?
No.
Wyffenbach?
Aye.
O'Kreppke?
No.
Chapman?
Aye.
Quaker?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes on a four to three vote. We're back to the original motion as amended. Just, hang on, let me turn the lights on here. Okay, discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Move to continue for two weeks.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a substitute motion and a second to continue this item for two weeks. Alderman Quaker, do you have any?
As amended.
As amended, that's the way it will go forward. Any additional comments? Okay, let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Just based on the previous vote, Mr. Mayor, I think it would take six votes to pass the ordinance, so it makes sense, so it's a good motion. the ordinance, so it makes sense, so it's a good motion on the floor, and I support the motion on the floor.
Okay, motion on the floor is a continuation motion. We will hold the discussion very closely to the continuation motion only. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. It is continued for two weeks, the next council meeting as amended. Item number 55, please.
Item 55 is first reading of ordinance 5506, increasing the penalty for insufficient funds and no account checks delivered to the city by amending section 9.04.010 of the municipal code, move approval of first reading.
We have a motion and a second for approval and discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could we give each one of these people a duck?
Only if they take one along. Okay, any other discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 56, please.
Item 56 is first reading of ordinance 5507, to clarify the authority of the city's, uh, police department to operate vehicles and carrying out its official duties by amending 2.20 of the municipal code, move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Motion is for approval, first reading of ordinance 5507. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 57, please.
Item 57 is second reading of ordinance number 5502, amending the procedures for authorization of conditional use permits by amending 17.54, 54.030 dot A dot 1 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, recommended for approval by the planning commission and legal and finance committee, and I move approval of second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval, second reading of 5502. Any discussion on that motion?
Mayor.
Yes, let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
If I could ask Bob Dominick a real quick question?
Sure.
Could you briefly overview what this changes? Bob?
Mr. Dominick, Growth Manager.
Yes, uh, what this does is it changes the approval procedures and adds some items on the application itself. Um, such things as loading docks and unloading dock areas, truck turning ready i, fencing, retaining walls, signage, lighting, dumpster locations and screening, exterior mechanical equipment and screening, building elevations with building heights, building colors and materials, rooftop design, um, dimensioned on the site plans, we know for sure how big things are, building setbacks, approach locations, and internal traffic circulation. These are all things that make it easier to make sure that the project is going to work, and we've been getting it from consultants and applicants, but it's not been defined on the application itself, and this is just adding that off the application.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Quaker, anything else? Motion on the floor is for approval, second reading of ordinance 5502. Any further discussion? Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 58, please.
Item 58 is second reading of ordinance 5499 regarding supplemental appropriation number three for 2009, move approval.
We have a motion, second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? This is for approval on ordinance 5499. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 59, please.
Item 59 is second reading of ordinance 5498 to revise the terms and conditions for city participation and the cost of bringing private non-conforming water and sewer service lines up to current standards by amending sections 3, 13.06.010 and 020 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, yield to the floor.
Okay, do we have a second?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, I understand the reasoning for this, uh, ordinance, but at the same time, I'm not sure that, uh, we've given enough time for the current process that we have in place to, uh, to work. And, um, I just, uh, you know, with, without several council members here and without, uh, Robert Ellis here, I think that the best thing to do tonight is to, is to, uh, continue this item, and I'm going to offer a substitute motion to continue.
Okay, we have a substitute motion and a second to continue this item for two weeks?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any discussion on the continuation motion only, please? Continuation motion only? Any discussion? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is continue item 59 for, to the next council meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 60, please.
Item 60 is second reading of ordinance 5500 to modify the structure of Department of Parks and Rec by revising 2.89 of the municipal code and repealing 2.86 and 2.90, move to approve second reading.
We have a motion and a second, approve second reading of ordinance 5500. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes with one yes. Just kidding. Unanimous vote. Okay, we will take items 61 through 73 in one motion, and Alderman Quaker, could you read the motion, please?
As I would move to continue, item 61 to 73 to, uh, May 4, council meeting.
We, we just, we do need to exclude item 63 and also item 69.
If I could just say, item 63 to July 16, and item 69 to May 18.
Very good. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to, to continue items 61, 62, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, 70, 71, 72, and 73 to the May 4 meeting, and item 63 to the July 6 meeting, and item 69 to the May 18 meeting. Just to get that in the record. Anyone want me to repeat that? Okay, any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to item number 74.
Item 74 is status of the Rushmont, uh, project and staff recommendation for Tiff District, uh, number 62. Move to acknowledge the report.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to acknowledge the report. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know this has been on our agenda before, but it's the second part of this that I, I guess I'm having a little concern with. Hanny came up and gave the status, but are, are we truly waiting for a recommendation from staff? If so, then I'd like to hear that before we acknowledge something.
Thank you. Let, let me make a recommendation to the committee. The reason we've been holding off on this is because we've had a couple of different folks that were interested in making proposals to the city council. Right now, we have two folks, and, and Hanny Shaffey and Dream Designs being one, the other, and I will tell you, is Brian Vulcan in his group. Uh, my recommendation is that you continue this to the work session. I believe it's scheduled, was it the 28th? The 28th, and, and at that time, we can take a full discussion and have full, basically discussion and debate. And, uh, my understanding is that both of these entities want to come back somewhere around the 4th or 5th of May to make a formal presentation to the council. But if we take this to the working committee, then I can give you an update, at least what have I, what I've been informed of as far as.
Yeah.
Yes, let's go back to Alderman Chapman.
Just a follow-up question then, Mr. Mayor. Um, you, you're recommending taking this to the parking work session because there's some parking related to this. Um, it, it would almost seem that we should have some resolution of this, or some discussion of this prior to creating a parking plan. I mean, if this is about parking, because tied up in that parking plan, or at least the recommendations that's come forward, is to use the money that's in 2012, or use part of that money to do some other things. So, um, i- if we're going to tangle these issues, I mean, I'm a little uncomfortable having that parking plan discussion before we have the Rushmont discuss, or the Tiff discussion.
Okay, very good. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I expressed my concerns the same as Malcolm, because when we first, uh, you know, I was part of the committee that, uh, listened to three different groups come forward with a plan, and, and that committee had chose the Rushmont. And now we're talking about two other ones and bringing it to the work session, which the work session, we've had nine meetings on just that alone, and now we're going to throw this on top of it. I don't think we're going to get anything done during that work session, but, but listen to that. You know, I mean, that's where my concern is, is, is maybe we should have had a, a committee again put together to listen to those proposals that want to come back board, and if there was another person in, involved, because I think the work session is going to get sidetracked now. And that's my concern with that.
Yeah. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
I would move to continue to the 28th meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this to the working session, the 28th meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Just to friendly, i- if it could be the first item on the agenda then, I, I just think that we need to have this discussion because it has bearing on the parking plan. So, uh, and I agree with Lloyd that if we're going to start adding these sorts of things, we aren't going to get where we need to get to with that parking discussion, but i- if that's what we're going to have, and I can support the motion on the floor, but if we're going to have it.
Okay, motion on the floor is to continue this item to the 28th working session. Any further discussion? Seeing no additional lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 75, please.
Item number 75 is to identify a funding, funding source for automated external defibrillators for the Rapid City Police Department Patrol Units, move to authorize up to $45,000 with 50% coming from Rapid City Police Department and 50% from council contingency fund.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and that is to approve the purchase of these automated, automatic external defibrillators and the funding source to come half from the contingency, half from the PD. I believe the amount is about $45,000, is that correct? So roughly 22.5 each. Okay, discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to say, uh, thank you to our police chief and fire chief for, uh, their support of this and their encouragement of the council to, uh, proceed with this. I'd also like to thank, uh, Bruce Peterson for, um, uh, sharing the story with us in, today, the, the news is almost completely dominated by bad news, and I'm grateful that this is a success story. And I, I think that this is a, a very sound investment for the city to, to make. As the testimony was given the other day in committee, uh, squad cars were able to make it to the scene of a cardiac arrest 50% of the time faster than an ambulance or a fire truck. And, uh, I would encourage us to, uh, proceed with, uh, with this, uh, motion. And, uh, I would also like to encourage, uh, the mayor and others when they encounter, uh, when they talk to our sheriff and county commissioners, to encourage them, although funding is tight, to do the same for, uh, Pennington County, uh, squad cars as well. Thank you.
Very, very good. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too think that this is a, um, a good decision if the council approves this. Uh, I guess my question is more about funding. Um, I, I'd like to hear the balance in the mayor and council's contingency fund.
Mr. Preston.
Thank you, Mayor. The council budgeted $150,000 for the contingency, and up until this point, we have not utilized any of those funds or committed any funds from that. Uh, do understand, we did have a number of snow removal, I think I have to throw that in there, but, so that probably will be coming. Thank you.
Mr. Chapman.
I didn't hear the last part, so the, some of the past snow?
No.
Will not come from, will not be asked of council contingency?
We, we had approximately a million dollars identified for snow removal in 2009. We have not, we've spent, I believe, and this is very rough numbers because not all the bills are in, somewhere between 600 and 700,000. So there still is money, but what Mr. Preston is saying is typically, if indeed we have a couple more major events, they typically look to the council contingency to help fund that. But up to this point, there is 100, $150,000 ident, uh, still available in the council contingency.
I support the motion on the floor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I wanted to, uh, have a special thank you to Mr. Bruce Peterson, who's in the audience, who's driven this process. Um, I think that people here, chief and everybody involved, would, would, would probably agree to that, and, and chief's getting behind the whole defibrillator thing. And I had discussions with some of the people at the fire department, Mike Thompson, who's really behind this, this program, and, and is willing to step up and, and work with the police department to, uh, uh, help train them, use these defibrillators, and, and this is a really good expense from council contingency, one that I can really support. And I just wanted to thank everybody involved for supporting it, and, and again, we're making a good decision here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to Alderman Bill O'Krepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Will all the police cars have one of these now?
Yes.
They will.
Okay, so $45,000 will equip these defibrillators for the entire fleet.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Let's go to, did anyone want to speak before Alderman Quaker speaks for a second time? If so, turn on your light. Not, let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief Allen, I have a, a quick question, uh, for you. This will be, as my understanding is, would be a, a competitive bidding, a bidding process to, uh, obtain these units. How quickly can we, can we move through the process to put these in the squad cars? I understand there's 26 that we're going to purchase.
Go ahead, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think we can do it very quickly, a few weeks for the bidding process, uh, however long it takes the company to provide them, and, uh, we can virtually install them in a few days. Training, on the other hand, I know, uh, Mike Thompson has assured us that training will be very, um, easily administered, and, uh, so I think we're probably looking at 45, under 60 days for complete startup.
Yep, thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval, with the funding identified per the motion. Any additional comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Item number 76.
Item 76 is authorize staff to start forensic chemist at higher step. I believe the mayor said R. Am I correct the other day? Is it step R?
Uh, don't think we went quite that high. Chief, where'd we end up? What was the last offer we made?
I can't remember if, if it was M or N, but I think N is the, the right one.
N, as in November.
N is in November.
Okay, so that'd be, that would be your request?
Yes.
Okay.
That is my motion.
Okay, do we have, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to authorize the, the, uh, police chief to offer up to a step N in trying to get a forensic chemist on board. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Item 77, please.
Item 77 is resolution to amend the city Rapid City's compensation plan to change the classification of forensic examiner position from exempt to non-exempt, move approval. to change the classification of forensic examiner position from exempt to non-exempt. Move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
What is the city's policy relating to comp time for exempt employees? I mean, instead of doing this where somebody could have thirty, forty hours of overtime, is this, is it something that we could keep it unexempt and keep it salary and do comp time? What's our policy relating to that?
Let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Generally, comp time is something that municipalities would use in lieu of paying overtime. To the extent that it's allowed, it's allowed on a department-by-department basis, depending on the operational needs of the department, so there's no citywide policy.
Have we, have we penciled out how much time this position is? I mean, is it, is it, I mean, if we do non-exempt pay, should it really be at, at N? Because then, because you're, because the typical rule is, is when you move.
That, that's a different, whole different discussion. These are two different positions that we're talking about. One is the forensic chemist and the other one is a forensic examiner position.
I said forensic in the beginning. Never mind.
Anything else?
So it's forensic chemist and forensic examiner. We're talking about two different positions.
Yes, sir.
And this is for an ID technician, forensic examiner. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, motion on the floor is for approval. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number seventy-eight, please.
Item seventy-eight is authorize mayor and finance officer to sign release of agreement with Midland Rushmore LLC regarding payment of proportionate share of lift station upgrade costs. Move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on the motion? Let's go to Alderman Chapman, who's probably going to ask to abstain.
I will, Mr. Mayor. I, I will ask to abstain from item seventy-eight, seventy-nine, and eighty, and I'll just move away from the dice.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Yep. Yep. Okay, motion on the floor is for approval on item number seventy-eight, which is authorize, authorize the mayor and finance officer to sign a release of an agreement with Midland Rushmore LLC regarding the payment of proportional share of the lift station upgrade costs. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number seventy-nine, please.
Item seventy-nine is authorize mayor and finance officer to sign release of agreement with Midland Rushmore LLC.
I'm sorry. And let the record reflect that Alderman Chapman did, is abstaining from item seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty. I'm sorry. Alderman Quaker.
Regarding construction of off-site improvements at the intersection of La Crosse Street and Rab Street. Move approval. That was item seventy-nine.
We have a motion and a second for approval on item number seventy-nine. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number eighty, please.
Item eighty is authorize mayor and finance officer to sign release of agreements with Bypass LLC regarding improvements to North Elk Vale Road. Move approve.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Let's go to public work items, and Alderman Kroger. Could you start with item number eighty-one, please?
Item number eighty-one is to appeal, appeal of denial for an exception to allow driveway spacing less than thirty-five foot. Mayor, before I put a motion on the floor, we had asked staff to get with the applicant and, and go through this, so could we go to staff and get some comments from them?
Is there any objection to, to going? Okay, let's have a short presentation from our city engineer, Dale Tech.
Thank you, Mayor.
This is actually in reference to both, actually from eighty-one through eighty-five, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Brief overview of, of the situation out there, and I guess I'd like to address comments made by Mr. Henrickson and Mr. Poliski. This is the big D on West Main Street. The area that I have hatched in the center is the proposed addition to the building. I believe it's to house restrooms as well as a walk-in convenience store type service. The areas that I have circled around the property, there are five circles. The one in the upper right off of St. On Street, there is a proposed approach. The other four are existing approaches. The four existing approaches, I believe that none of them meet the current standards that are required in our street criteria manual. And the proposed approach in the upper right-hand corner does not meet the criteria either due to the approach separation at the alley as well as having to install vertical curb. Currently, it's rollover curb at the location there marked P. Staff met with the applicant and the applicant's representative on site Friday morning and discussed what can be, what could be accommodated here. Staff believes that the approach located at... Bear with me here just a sec. If that approach were closed at this location, that would provide a safer condition for the motorists on West Main by not having so much approach space on West Main, allowing traffic to enter and ingress the site from St. On Street there on the east side of the property, and then also allow the proposed approach on the upper right-hand corner for the parking in the rear. I believe the applicant was not in favor of that proposal. I, I think his stance is that they would prefer to leave everything as is and allow that proposed approach off the rear parking there. In a nutshell, that was the gist of our conversation on site. Any questions? I'd be happy to try to entertain.
Okay, Mr. Tech, just for clarification. Staff's recommendation is to close the circ- the circled approach and allow the, the rest of the approaches to remain as is?
That is correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure the council knew that. Okay, very good. There is no motion on the floor. Before we discuss this, let's get a motion on the floor for item number eighty-one, please.
For discussion, I will put the motion to...
Ron, before you make a motion, Dale, can you number each one of those so we know which one, each one of these motions is on? Okay, can you go one, two, three, I mean, literally go?
Well, the, the exception requests that are in front of you aren't for each individual approach.
Okay.
There are, it's going to be very difficult to explain, but I'll do my very best.
Okay.
Okay, item number eighty-one, appeal for an, appeal of denial for an exception to allow driveway spacing less than thirty-five foot. In this area here between three and four, that's a distance less than thirty-five feet. I believe the ordinance allows for that to occur if there is vertical curb there. If there is not vertical curb there, or the curb is in such poor condition, it can't really be determined whether or not, I believe the applicant's saying it doesn't make any sense to put vertical curb there because the condition of the street is such that it's not going to help anything. So that, that's item number eighty-one.
Okay.
Number item eighty-two is a...
We're going to deal with eighty-one first.
Okay.
Can you write where eighty-one is?
Yep, there again. Can you circle item number eighty? Right there. So what, what they're, excuse me, what they're asking for in eighty-one is not to replace the rollover curb with, with a new curb, which would basically be a combination of approaches and a vertical curb. Well, we're not, sorry, we don't, Dale, up here, please. So our understanding is the eighty-one is dealing with, with the rollover curb on St. On Street, and what the, what the request for is to leave the rollover curb and not the requirement to actually put in a vertical curb for that section of where the box is. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's my motion, Mayor, is to approve the appeal.
Okay. Approve the denial. Okay, so to approve the denial of the appeal? Or?
No, to, they're, they're appealing the denial, so I want to...
I always love these, these are always confusing.
I want to approve...
The exception.
The exception.
Thank you. So the motion on the floor is for approval of the exception to allow driveway spacing less than thirty-five feet on lots twenty-seven through thirty-two and south fifty feet of lots four through, one through four of the green acres addition. Correct? Okay, discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Qua- or Kroger, you still have the floor if you'd like it.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess the one reason I, I made that motion was that whole street has, has the rollover curb, and I think the other streets in that area all have the step-up curb, I, whatever you call it. But I believe at some point in time, that will become the curb that city staff wants, and that would be the appropriate time to put it in. So that's why I made that motion, Mayor.
Yep, very good. Let's go to Alderman Bill O'Krepeki.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I voted to have you all get together, and that's, that was my, that was my intent at the, at the Public Works. And did you get together?
As I stated, we got together Friday morning.
Okay, was there any compromises, or did everybody have, did, did you all come out with the same decisions that you had before you went into it?
As I, as I stated before, public work staff, after meeting on site, was agreeable to, instead of recommending denial of, of all the requests, would be to allow approaches one, three, four, and five.
Dale, why don't we do it this way? Which one of these did you, did you not support?
The one that circled.
Okay, and on our agenda, is that eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, or eighty-fourty-five?
That would be, that would be a portion of number eighty-four in addition to a portion of eighty-two, because it's in excess of twenty-eight feet wide, which is part of eighty-two, and it does not meet the corner clearance per eighty-four.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, on eighty-one, after a site visit, you're okay with eighty-one?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. O'Krepeki, you still have the floor.
Thank you. So you're okay with everything but except number two?
Approach number...
Forget it, forget it.
Okay.
Motion on the floor is for approval of the exception. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Dale, is there a sidewalk immediately adjacent to that rollover curb?
There is not. The entire parking surface is paved, therefore there's no sidewalk.
The city is committed to putting vertical curbs in there as soon as it's programmed for rehab?
Yes.
And how soon would that be? Four, five, ten years?
I guess I can't answer that. I, I didn't research the status of that street. I don't believe that St. On Street is on the CIP, so it'd be in a future consideration project beyond five years.
It just seems that we have the opportunity to replace rollover curb next to an area where people walk, and this would be a good opportunity to do that. But if the street is so deteriorated, that doesn't matter, then let's get this on a CIP agenda for discussion later on. We can talk about it later.
Okay, motion on the floor is for approval of the exception to allow driveway spacing of less than thirty-five feet. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Dale?
Okay, yes, item number eighty-two
Okay.
is a appeal of a denial for an exception to allow a driveway width greater than twenty-eight feet. As you can see, items, approaches numbers one, two, and three are in excess of twenty-eight feet. So what public work staff is recommending is that approach number two be closed and numbers one and three remain.
Okay, and that's what, is that what the denial of eighty-two would do?
You'd have to break it out, because that, that denial would be for all three approaches.
Okay, I'm going to take a couple lights, and there may be some questions. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I understand what, I mean, it's just not so neat and clean that we can apply eighty-two to number two or number three. It's not just that neat and clean. My understanding is that after the conversation on Friday morning, staff's recommendation is to, to close number two and then make the necessary changes within the eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, whichever number. My question, Mr. Mayor, is Mr. Poliski said that his competitors down the street went through a situation like this. I believe that West Main and Mountain View, there was some reconstruction there at the service station on the corner. And that is a entrance to that service station that's even close, I mean, that's as close to the corner as this is. And when that reconstruction was done, that entrance wasn't closed. I mean, what, what's, what was the city's policy on that? There are entrances off of West Main and there are entrances off of Mountain View. So how, how is that different than this situation?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things are different about that site. First of all, that was a street project, and Mountain View is actually a state highway. Therefore, the DOT has jurisdiction over the approaches on Mountain View, whereas the city has jurisdiction on the approaches on West Main. It was not a redevelopment of the site, it was a, a, a street project. This, this is being driven by redevelopment of the site, or a major addition to the, to the property. And that kicks in the street criteria requirements for the approaches to the property, whereas the road construction does not kick in these criteria. Does that make any sense?
It, it does. So by the applicant coming in saying, I want to make changes to my property, then that triggers some conformity by, in terms of city's structure?
Yes.
How, Mr. Mayor, may I?
Please.
How wide is E or number two? Is that twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine feet, three inches.
And the applicant would like for, just to leave it as is?
He'd like to leave it as is, yes.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, anything else? Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. These, these issues here are always tough, because whenever you have a, a property owner that has curb cuts and you try and take them away, I mean, I can certainly understand that, and I wouldn't want to do it. And I think Mr. Tech answered the question I had was, is, you know, West Main, I don't know when that was reconstructed or when it was done, but wouldn't that be the opportunity when you look at, at handling the, all of the businesses at that point in time? But you're saying, Dale, that, that under a regular street project, we cannot do that?
That's correct. We, we would typically negotiate with the landowners to, to try to get them into compliance, but they're under no ordinance or regulation to have to at the time of the street project. If they have an existing approach there, we would typically replace it in kind in the same location. But since this is a redevelopment of the site on the, the property side, not the right-of-way side, that kicks in these requirements.
I guess my, my last comment, it was Alderman Chapman brought up the gas station down at the corner of Mountain View in West Main. But when you go to the west, another block, you have another convenience store, gas station there that has basically the identical, same egress and access. And almost identical, and I guess the one, you know, I don't know if they're ever going to do a, a remodel project, which, which would cause us to close them, but I, at this point in time, I'm looking at not supporting the, the motion on the floor, Mayor. Thank you.
Actually, we have no motion on the floor, so if someone would like to offer motion.
I will make the motion to approve the exception.
Okay, motion on the floor is on item number eighty-two, which is to approve the exception to allow driveway width greater than twenty-eight feet. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind the council that a reconstruction of a street is not an opportunity to close an existing curb cut. And council may recall that recently the city paid some money to a property owner as a result of a lawsuit because a curb was closed when a road was reconstructed. So that's not a viable time to correct these issues. If you want to correct them, now is an opportunity to do so.
Motion on the floor is for approval of the exception. Let's go to Alderman Malcolm Chapman.
I, I support the motion on the floor, Mr. Mayor, but I have a question for the applicant, if I may.
Okay, go ahead, please.
Don? I, in the conversation in terms of a compromise, traffic, why would it be such a hindrance if there was, I mean, you could still get in on that, on number one to the lot as opposed to number one and number two? Do you think it would truly be that much of a detriment to the property if people still had access on West Main and had access on St. Onge? I mean, what's the biggest, what's the big detriment that you're closing one of the curb cuts?
Well, Don, could you?
Sure.
And there again, typically, just, just give everybody a little bit of fair warning. What we typically do is we'll allow the council members to ask questions, and we allow you to answer. But if you start moving on and talking about other things as far as, then that's when I'll actually ask you just to refer back to the question that was asked, so. So go ahead, please.
The, when there's traffic coming down St. Onge, since we've had this issue, we've watched people will come down West Main and they'll cut right in there if there's traffic backed up on, on St. Onge. And so if you're coming from this, if you're coming from, from the ga- from down by Bacon Park and up to here, this is the safest entry. Otherwise, you, you're taking an entry back like this, because a lot of the times, traffic is backed up on St. Onge, blocking both of those, those other entrances. And the other store that I'm referring to is just down the block, has three entrances off West Main.
Mr. Chapman.
Thank you, Don.
Okay.
The motion on the floor.
Very good, thank you. Any further discussion? The motion on the floor is to grant the exception to allow a driveway greater than twenty-eight feet. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number eighty-three, please.
Item number eighty-three is appeal of denial for an exception to allow property to take access of the higher order street. Mister, can I go to Mr. Tech?
But I think, why don't you go and make a motion, if you will?
Okay, I'd make the motion to approve the exception.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to grant the exception. Any discussion on the motion? Let's go to Mr. Tech, and can you just point that out?
I just, I guess would like to clarify what this means. To take access off the higher order street, West Main is an arterial road. It's the higher order street. St. Onge is a collector or a residential street. So our criteria says, if you've got a corner lot, you need to take access off the, the road less used. road less used to prevent traffic conflicts on the higher order street. So this particular exception request is, if it were approved, you'd have to actually close both approaches, one and two. So.
Okay.
That's a little clarification.
Okay. Motion on the floor is for approval of the exception to allow the property to take access off the lower order street. That makes sense, higher order street. Am I reading this right?
The, the exception is to take access off the higher order street. They're supposed to take access off the lower.
Very good. Everyone clear on the motion? Obviously, I'm not. Okay. Motion on the floor is for approval of the exception. Let's go to Alderman, Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, I just got confused from, are we doing something of what, well, I think we're doing opposite of what we want to do from, we're doing what we want to do? We want to leave it the way it is.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's what this motion will do.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to grant the exception to allow the property to take access off the higher order street. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number eighty-four.
Eighty-four is appeal of denial for an exception to allow approach corner clearance. I would move approve of the exception.
We have a motion and a second to grant the exception to allow less than the required site distance for the approaches. Any discussion on that motion? Motion is to grant the exception. Seeing no, no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item eighty-five is appeal of denial of an exception to allow less than required site distance for the approaches. I would move approval of the exception.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second on item number eighty-five to grant the exception. Any further discussion on that motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We're onto the bids. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. Mr. Preston, what do you have for us?
Thank you, Mayor.
Item eighty-six.
Okay, we do, we do have six items here under the bids. First item is Floorman Street Downs project. Received six bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from RCS Construction for, in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy cents.
We have a motion and a second to accept the contract from RCS Construction for sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy cents. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item eighty-seven, please.
Item eighty-seven is Forty-Fourth Street Reconstruction Phase One Project. Received five bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting a bid from RCS Construction in the amount of one million, six hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and nineteen cents.
We have a motion and a second for approval to accept the bid from RCS Construction for a dollar amount of one million, six hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Next item is Sixth Street Water Main Franklin Street to St. Charles Street Project. Received six bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from Rapid Construction in amount of forty-nine thousand, ninety-nine dollars and ninety cents.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the bid from Rapid Construction for forty-nine thousand, ninety-nine dollars and ninety cents. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman, Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for city engineer and perhaps finance officer. The council will, all remember, on November, November of two thousand and seven, the, this firm got into a lot of trouble with the city for using used pipe. And I do have my firms correct, right? I looked it up now, so. So my, and looking at the spread on the bid, there is, there is quite a, in my opinion, there is quite a spread. And I, I would like assurance that this contractor has been doing a good job since, since the reprimand and that the city inspections are, are showing that used pipe is not being used.
Mr. Tech.
I guess I would agree with your assessment. Maybe it wasn't assessment, but yes, the, the contractor has been doing good work. This will be a public works project, therefore we'll have full-time inspection on the project to ensure that they use the new materials as specified in the contract documents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good question. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is to approve the contract award to Rapid Construction for forty-nine thousand, ninety-nine dollars and ninety cents. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I want to zoom out just a little bit there, Mr. Preston. Thank you. Okay, item number eighty-nine.
Item number eighty-nine is the limestone gravel. Received two bids as listed for a variety of different items. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from Pete Lean and Sons for the extended price, total extended price of seventy-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents.
We have a motion and a second to award to Pete Lean and Sons for a grand total of seventy-three thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number ninety-one, I'm sorry, number ninety, please.
Item number ninety is the ready-mix concrete. Received two bids as listed for multiple items. Staff again is recommending awarding the bid to Pete Lean and Sons for the total extended price of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents.
We have a motion, second to award to Pete Lean and Sons for a grand total of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman, Malcolm Chapman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just looking at the bid, I mean, the advertising authority was like twenty thousand dollars. The previous one, I mean, it, the advertising authority was lower than what the bid amount came in. I could understand the slight difference there. This seems to be a huge difference. If you could explain that?
Mr. Tech.
Thank you. The reason the advertising authority amounts differ greatly from the, the bid amounts were the, back in, I think, February twenty-fourth, we received the authority to advertise for bids. Since then, we had blizzards on March tenth, March twenty-fourth, and April ninth, and that caused considerable street road damage, curb damage from snow removal. Therefore, we've adjusted the amounts that we're requesting for repair. That's the, the reason for the large difference.
So it's quantities?
Correct. It's quantities. The price is, is fair, I believe. It's the quantities we've expanded to cover all the maintenance needs that we'll have here after the, the spring thaw has occurred and we can get in and repair the damage.
Okay, Mr. Chapman, anything else?
Night, we can start on these road repairs like tomorrow?
We started yesterday, actually.
Thank you.
Don't say that. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval and an award to Pete Lean and Sons for a grand total of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That does take us to Mayor's items and items from the council and liaison reports?
Mayor, we've got one more item.
Oh, darn. Okay. Item ninety-one.
Item number ninety-one is for hot mix asphaltic concrete. Received three bids for multiple items as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from Simon Contractors for the total extended price of one hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
We have a motion and a second for approval and award to Simon Contractors for the dollar amount of one hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. And there again, I assume that the quantity was the difference between the advertising authority and what we're approving. Is that correct? Okay. Any additional questions? Motion on the floor is for approval. Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Items from mayor and council liaisons, I have a ninety-one AVE discussion about the twenty-four-seven program. I believe that was Alderman Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. As many of us are now aware, Pennington County has chosen to relocate the twenty-four-seven program, a very important program, by the way, but it was relocated into a residential area. I'd like to thank the mayor for the letter that he wrote dated the fifteenth of April to Jerry Johnson on Quincy Street. There's a number of other concerns that have been raised by many other constituents as well. I think it's important that we make sure everyone is aware that, once again, our legislature has, has tied our hands and we do not have a whole lot of ability to do anything about this except complain about our inability to do anything about this. And what I would like, however, is to have an update come to the May four city council meeting from our growth management director explaining what their recommendation is and, and give us some more specifics if possible, because then that is three days prior to the planning commission hearing of the eleven-six-nineteen review. And although we cannot direct the planning commission to do anything, we can at least make our concerns known at that May four meeting, and at least then there will be more discussion in front of the city council. So I, I know it's a little bit unusual. We have done it a few times before, including the discussion on the Adams Street facility. I would like to put a motion on the floor that asks for a, a presentation to the city council on the twenty, on the twenty-four-seven programs proposal to be given at the May four city council meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to ask staff to come in with a presentation at the May fourth city council meeting on the new location of the twenty-four-seven program. Discussion on that motion? Discussion on the motion? Let's go to Alderwoman, Deb Hadcock.
I'd just like to say, I think the program is a good program. It's been very successful. And I think with the process, they could do better on how they are working that process. I drove by there yesterday and there was just people just stand, you know, just sitting outside and, I mean, you need to make sure in any business that you do that it looks appropriate, appropriately, appropriate, I'm sorry, and that, I mean, to me, when you drive by there, it, it just doesn't look right the way they've got the process being done right now. So I think they can do better. Again, I'm not against the twenty-four-seven program, but if you're a neighbor, it's good to be a good neighbor and that's all we're asking here, so, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can someone explain to me where they put this twenty-four-seven?
Sure. It is on the backside of the NAU campus. It would be the next block to the south across from the Public Safety Building. So the Public Safety Building is Kansas City Street. The next street over, I believe, is Quincy Street. And in order to access that, you'd actually have to go up Quincy Street, head east, and then you'd actually, it's a small build, small metal building on the NAU campus.
Okay.
I believe I got the site right.
This, this is a decision made by the county?
It was a decision made by the sheriff, is my understanding.
I wonder if we could put one by his house? Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Lloyd LaCarre.
Thank you, Mayor. I do agree with Ms. Hadcock on the twenty-four-seven program does great work for keeping some of the citizens working and keeping their families together. I just wanted to give a little background information on this NAU building that's being used. The county has used it, leased it in the past. They used to teach DUI classes there and so forth, and so I haven't driven by to see what the traffic is now, but even when the twenty-four-seven program was on lacrosse, you had a line of people out front also. So no matter where it goes, there's, there's gonna be a line of people. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Procedure liaisons, questions? Anyone wish to speak before Alderman Quaker speaks for a second time? If so, turn your light. If not, we'll go to Alderman, Sam Quaker.
Something to think about between now and then, if we could help the county look at other alternatives. I'm not sure if there's been discussions with, formal discussions anyway with the county, but, you know, one, one thought that I had, and I don't know if this is possible or not, but the, the substation up at the, up at the mall, there's plenty of parking up there. Maybe that would be an opportunity. I would just please ask mayor and council leadership, I'm willing to help, let's, you know, let's work with the county, let's work with the sheriff, let's, let's try to avoid this being confrontational. And the way that we can, I think, find the best solution is to help them find another place for this important program. But there, there's a lot of traffic generated by this, folks, and, and there's, there's a lot of concern about this and, you know, the mayor's expressed his concern and a number of us have, have our concerns. Let's try to work with the county over the next few weeks and let's see if we can find other places. Perhaps there's other city buildings that we could explore so that we can present an option except, instead of just disagreeing with this, with this site. Could we do that?
Good. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Bill O'Krepke.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Don Holloway just doesn't throw a dart on the wall and say this is where he wants to have it. Is there a reason why he picked that particular place? Anybody know? So he's used that, that building before for this? Was there a problem with that then? Well, the whole point is, is that, you know, I mean, is, there had to have been a reason for why he wanted it, he wanted it to go there. Is there, is there a logistics issue behind it? He wants it close to...
I believe that, well, I don't want to speak for Sheriff Holloway, but I think that he'll be coming forward in, with that explanation because he is going to be submitting eleven-six-nineteen review, which will be coming from the planning commission, I believe, in the next thirty days. So I, I think that question will be answered.
So nobody on this, nobody here understands, nobody knows why?
Could we invite him?
Okay.
Could we invite him?
I mean, maybe that, maybe that would be appropriate before, before we want anything out. And I'm okay with, you know, sending something forward to the planning commission, voicing some concerns like that, but at least, at least I, I would like to know a little bit more before we, before we do that. So maybe, maybe we can have Sheriff Holloway come explain to the meeting before we make any votes out. That would be of help to me.
Yep. Motion on the floor is to send this item to the May fourth city council meeting. Place it on the agenda. Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderman, Malcolm Chapman.
Mayor, just a clarification. I mean, I've heard a lot of different things, so I think the motion that I heard was to have staff give us a presentation on the twenty-four-seven program.
Yes.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay.
Yep. That is the motion, and that will be at the May fourth city council meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor. Okay, Mr. O'Krepke? Yep, go ahead.
Are we gonna include, as part of this motion, to have Sheriff Holloway come?
I'm not sure. We can make...
Well, I'm saying, at least invite him. I mean, right now, he's not, his name is not on the motion.
Yep. That's not part of the motion, but I'm...
It is.
Okay.
It was, it has been all along.
Okay. So someone will extend the invitation. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item ninety-one B, please. This is report on the now what? It was a what now.
Mayor, thank you.
I had what now, I guess.
Yeah. What I'd like to do, this, I wanted to give a report on the Western Bo-Tech from the what-now program that Dr. Bailey put on. What I'd like to do is continue this to the next council meeting to be a team player so everybody's fresh when I do this. And along those lines, I'd like to continue item C, hit a report on the historical and boarding school trauma workshop. I'd like to continue that also to the next council meeting so I can get the names of the people that I wanted to recognize.
Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second to continue both ninety-one B and C to the next council meeting. Discussion on the continuation motion. Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 91D, journalists, thanks.
This is for Scott Ost and Lana Bradstream, but we appreciated, I think the council, if I can speak for the council, is going to miss Scott Ost. He is no longer with the Rapid City Journal. The Weekly has closed. We wish them good luck in, on their future endeavors. So, when you see the journalists or the people that write about us all the time, you become their friends and, and it's pretty cool. So, we're going to miss Scott and, and some of the people from the Rapid City Weekly, Lana Bradstreams, Mr. Lawrence, so just wanted to give you a big, give them a big thank you for basically their journalism skills, so.
Okay, thank you. Just a quick update. My understanding is Scott Ost is going to go back to school, get his degree, and Lana Bradstream, I believe, has picked up, at least she's freelancing for the Rapid City Journal now. So, okay? Okay. No action required on that. That does take us to the public hearing items, item number 92 through 107. Chair, look for a motion to open the public comment period on item 92 through 107, please.
[laughing]
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to open the public comment period. We have no speaker requests formed and we have no audience. So, I will make the assumption that there is no one that wants to speak to any of the items 93 through 107. Let's see. What do we do? We do need to go through and this is continued public hearing consent items 92 through 97. Do we expect any of those to be polled? Okay, so the chair would look for a motion to approve items 90 through to 97 inclusive. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. That does take us to the end of the public comment period, or the end of the public hearing consent items. Chair, look for a motion to close the public hearing items.
Close.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearings items on items 92 through 107. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Yep, we're on the consent public hearing items 92 through, I'm sorry, 98 through 102. Do we expect any of those, we need, have any, have any of those polled, 98 through 102 inclusive? Okay? Chair would look for a motion to approve items 98 through 102. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. That does take us on to the non-consent public hearing items, items 103 through 107. Let's go to items 103, please. Is that Mr. Kroger or is that? Okay, let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger, if you'd read in 103, please.
Item number 103 is approval request by James L. Skoll Jr. for an accept, special exceptions to the flood area construction regulations to allow temporary structures in the floodway and removal of the structures the next day after the event. Located east of the intersection of Chaplin and Shore Drive, I would move approval with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 104, please.
Item 104 is to prove an exception request by the city Rapid City for a fence height exception to allow a 10-foot high fence in a public district located at 4415 Parkview Drive. I would move approval with stipulations.
We have a motion, second for approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? 104, approval with stipulations. Seeing no further discussion, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 105, please.
Item 105 is second reading of ordinance 5503, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by the city Rapid City, requested by the city Rapid City for a rezoning from no-use district to general commercial district located west of Valley Drive and north of South Florida Highway 44. I would move approval.
Thank you.
We have a motion, second for approval of item 105, second reading ordinance 5503. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 106, please.
Item 106 is second reading ordinance 5504, second reading ordinance 5503, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of the chap, of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by the city Rapid City for a rezoning from no-use district to general commercial district located at 1585 Valley Drive. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, second for approval, second reading ordinance 5504. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 107, please.
Item 107 is second reading ordinance 5505 and second reading ordinance 5503, an ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, rezoning the within-described property as requested by the city Rapid City for a rezoning from no-use[1710.51]